Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, June 1st. Thank you for joining us for the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Kathy, can you please take the roll? We can't hear you.
Reverend Matthias?
President.
Mr. Ross? Mr. Ross? I know he's here.
President.
Ms. Shaqy?
Here.
Williams?
President.
Dr. Baker?
Here.
Ms. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Lewis is here. President Grant?
Present.
Okay.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Alright, and we also want to give a reminder of our COVID-19 resolution for board meeting rules and public participation in electronic meetings. That resolution allows the Grand Rapids Public School Board to meet virtually while we were under the stay-at-home shelter order. Changes have happened with that order even today, so we will continue to share how we will move forward, but today, we are still presently under that resolution. The first thing that we have on the agenda is celebrations, and I will hand things over to Dr. Gorman.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Madam President, members of the board, as this is the last board meeting of the school year. Students are out on Wednesday, of course. There are many celebrations this evening. So first off, I would like to ask Eric Harmson to come forward. He will be discussing the Steelcase Tech Buddy Partnership Appreciation. So Craig, please invite Eric in, please.
Good evening, President Grant, school board members, Dr. Gorman, and Dr. Roby. Thank you for the opportunity to talk about and celebrate a group of Steelcase employees who are volunteering their expertise and support as tech buddies to 11 GRPS peer professionals, childcare workers, and secretaries in support of distance learning. It is my pleasure to introduce and thank Cordell Zachary and Rhonda Maxwell from Steelcase, who have a few remarks to share.
Hey, guys. Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. See if Rhonda is gonna join. Eric, was she available in the break room?
Craig, can you bring her forward?
Okay.
Yep, she's coming now.
Thank you.
Perfect. Yeah, we appreciate you guys letting us share everything we know about the program. It's been awesome to work with Eric and team. So I want to tell you a little bit about the Steelcase Change Corps. So the Change Corps was created about a year ago. It's a global initiative, and its sole purpose is to think beyond just giving money and furniture, but to offer expertise in our Steelcase thinking to create innovation for social issues. So one of those issues is that we kind of focus on is education. So when we, when Rhonda and I was thinking about ways that we can impact local students in the area during COVID, I think the first thing we thought of is like, we need to talk to GRPS. I know they're doing some great things for our students. So going into the conversation, Christian was able to introduce us to Dr. Ron Gorman, and you know, we came into this mindset of thinking, okay, we need to impact the students in some way. We need to maybe do some mentoring. We need to maybe do tutoring. And that is kind of, kind of narrow vision of what we wanted. But Dr. Gorman helped us, helped us kind of paint a picture of the whole kind of issues when switching to a distance learning platform. He informed us that there's gonna be some hiccups with the staff, that there's gonna be some troubleshooting and some hiccups when switching to a virtual learning platform. So from that, from then on, we thought about, hey, we have people who are working less. We have tech advisors available to help with certain issues. So we thought about, why not create this virtual buddy program? Where we can help staff with issues, with teams, with best practices for communicating to students virtually, or those types of things. So Ron connected us with Eric and his team to help us think about ways that we could do this. So we have a Steelcase service desk who have made themselves available to the staff that need help for complex issues. We also have eight Steelcase staff that have joined as virtual buddies. So we have Alex Kuchen, Elena Fortuna, myself, Rhonda Maxwell, who's on the call, Keith Boujac, Melissa Powell, Kristen Cobwell, and Laura Belts. We also have the Change Corps team that supports, you know, on the backend and also the Steelcase Service Desk team. So this is a team comprising of people all over the US, as well as includes Romania. So we're hoping that this provides some help to you guys, and we appreciate everything you're doing for the students. And I wanted to let Rhonda speak on some things that we're kind of thinking for the future and next steps.
Hi, can you hear me? Great, thanks. Yeah, this has been such an amazing experience working together with Grand Rapids Public Schools, and we really hope to build on this. What really came out of this was this understanding, like Cordell mentioned, we came in thinking, okay, well, let's do what we're used to doing, which is mentorship, or something along those lines. But, but the situation called for something much different, and we wouldn't have really known that without having a deeper involved conversation with Dr. Gorman and then Eric further beyond that. And, and we started to really recognize that there was a lot more we could do, and, and this has, you know, been a short-term solution to this particular problem, but we really hope that going forward, that we can really co-collaborate on things that you need. We don't want to be just coming in and saying, hey, Steelcase has these resources. We want to help you. Here's, here's what you're gonna get. We want to know what you need, and we want to be able to adapt and leverage what we've got to be able to fit that need, and that's really what we're looking at going forward. And I'm just gonna speak to just a touch. Like, I'm so excited to hear that some more of the shelter-in-place things are being lifted now. And we'd already, prior to this being started, we were working together to try and get an outdoor learning initiative together with Grand Rapids Public Schools, along with Camp Blodgett. And we're, I'm really excited to get that up and going again in the fall, possibly, if it's able to work out that way, and then any, any future collaborations that will really allow us to leverage Steelcase's wealth of resources together with what your guys' needs really, really are.
Thank you very much, and thank you for, in this time of crisis, really reaching out and finding out how you can help our students. We know that really being able to educate our students is always a community effort, but especially right now.
Of course.
Does anyone have any questions or any follow-up for the Steelcase team?
I'm just wondering, just John Matthias here, I'm just wondering if, if you got to help with parents and some of the techie stuff that maybe was little humps or difficulties for some of the families, how, how did you guys handle some of that?
So we've been focusing on Steel, on GRPS staff, and we weren't able to, we haven't been holding on parents, but we talked about that as a phase two. And maybe that's going back to Eric and Craig and Nick and thinking about how we could help with that as well. I think we have employees that have a bigger appetite now to help out, so that could be a phase two for us.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You guys for having us.
Thank you.
So Ms. Grant, would you like me just to kind of go down the list of celebrations? Will that be okay?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay, so the next two employees we are going to recognize are employees who have been with the Grand Rapids Public Schools for 40 years, four zero. So we have two employees this evening. We have Felicia Burgess and we have Mita Townsend. And I would like to share a little bit about both employees and share with you some, some thoughts from our office. So first up, we have Ms. Felicia Burgess. She is in facilities and operations. She is a section leader. Again, 40 years of experience in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Has worked as a custodian at Union, Central, Huff, Riverside, worked at the service building, Ottawa Hills, Franklin Campus, Brookside. She has worked as an operations specialist and now an operations sector leader. So that's 40 years of experience for Ms. Felicia Burgess. And she started out in 1980, so we're just so, so thankful that she is on the team. Secondly, Ms. Mita Townsend, also with 40 years of experience. Mita is a special education supervisor. She has been a teacher at Aberdeen, Casey Mayfield, Westwood Middle School, Renaissance Montessori. She's been an assistant principal, I'm sorry, at Renaissance Montessori, Iroquois Middle School, special education administrator for Region III, special education supervisor, a teacher at campus elementary, a supervisor and teacher consultant, and now a special education supervisor. I would like to just read some thoughts from our human resources department and also the superintendent's office to Ms. Felicia Burgess and Ms. Mita Townsend. Congratulations on your 40 years of service with the Grand Rapids Public Schools. We recognize that this is a significant milestone in your tenure with the district. We are truly appreciative of your dedication and commitment to serving the children of our schools. To demonstrate our genuine appreciation, sorry, for all of your efforts, we are presenting you with the 40 Years of Service Award. Again, thank you for your continued service to the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Craig, are either Ms. Townsend or Ms. Burgess in attendance this evening? And if so, could you please have Ms. Burgess come forward at this time? Alright, so they're both here. Ms. Burgess, would you like to, Felicia, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. I just wanted to say it's been a real privilege and an honor, and I most, right now, I just miss the kids. So, you know, I don't like this new normal, and hopefully, we can get back to where we were and, and to, just to be around our kids again and that I can serve them in the best way that I can. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Ms. Townsend, we would love for you to say a few words, please.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for the acknowledgement. This really snuck up on me. I thought I had a couple of more years, so just so appreciative. I want to let you know that I am on loan from my parents because I am a native of Washington DC. And so when I went to Calvin College, University now, and graduated, I never went back home. So I am so proud to be a part of the GRPS family. I count it a privilege and an honor to serve and continue to serve our students and families. So thank you so much for the acknowledgement.
Thank you. Ms. Grant or board members, any comments for our 40-year employees?
Absolutely. I'll start off, and then please join in. But thank you, ladies, so much for your service to the district and especially to our students. We know that it's not just one teacher or one principal that changes the student's life, but it's truly all staff members, from the people they see on the playground to the lunchroom, to facilities. They don't see us. They see you all. So thank you so much for your work. Dr. Flores?
Oh, yeah, certainly. I know what it means to be in the trenches and to work with our kids.
Can you hear me okay?
And I'm certainly proud of their effort, Ms. Burgess and Ms. Townsend. Thank you very much. The children, they deserve leadership and services like you provided, and, and our community is well-served by your, your service. So, great milestone, 40 years.
I know it's hard to know who's going to speak next, but feel free to chime in.
Yeah, I, I can only imagine the number of lives in your 40, well, 80 years combined, 40 years combined, you have had on students, and perhaps the memories that you have given them, that they carry on with them and perhaps exemplifying some of the ways that you impacted them. So we really appreciate the hard work and what you sowed into each of our students. Thank you.
And I would just like to add my congratulations as well. And John stole my thunder when he said, how many kids you must have touched over the years? And I'm so glad that Grand Rapids Public Schools have people like you. Thank you so much.
This is Kim Williams. Ladies, thank you so much for your service. You all look so beautiful. You must have started when you were about 15. Share your secret, please. Thank you so very much again, and I'm so glad that this is not a retirement celebration, that you'll stay with us a while yet. So thank you so much, and I'm sure you have many more lives to touch. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Alright, Dr. Gorman, I will turn it over to you.
So team, sometimes the screen is frozen at times, so I'm not trying to be disrespectful if I speak over anyone. So we'll try to work out those challenges. Thank you for being patient. So at this time, we have another celebration. This time, the celebration is for Ms. Shonda Vaughn. And if you have been around the Grand Rapids Public Schools, you will see, as the kids refer to as Ms. Shonda, you will see her everywhere. And since this is my essentially last Board of Education meeting as superintendent, if we continue only to do one a month, I really wanted to take this time to acknowledge Ms. Shonda. Ms. Shonda has, let me, let me tell you a little bit about her. She is a 1991 graduate of the Grand Rapids Public Schools. She is a central RAM, again, class of 1991. She is a certified master facilitator. Shonda works for Pine Rest Christian Mental Health Services as the community youth educator, implementing a healthy relationships curriculum to high school students in the Grand Rapids Public Schools. Shonda has served the students of the Grand Rapids Public Schools for over 15 years through various roles and partnering organizations. In addition to serving our high schools during the day, Shonda is intentional about making sure that she attends every single event. And when I say every single event, I mean every single event. Let me just read a couple to you. She has volunteered at the I-96 basketball tournament, the Floyd Mayweather Classic, the Red Hawks Showcase, the GRPS Turkey Trot, every single sports banquet we have. She is probably, and I'm not saying probably, she is the most recognized announcer in Ottawa Hills' history. Shonda has served as the varsity announcer at Ottawa Hills since 2006, and this, this wasn't included in her bio, but she does so well. Michigan High School Athletic Association had her announce the, the women's finals a couple of years ago when it was held at Calvin College. So the, our own GRPS employee, so to speak, friend, ally, was there to support that tournament because she is absolutely a rock star. She calls her students AITs, and for those of you who have some military service, AIT is Advanced Individual Training. AIT, from Ms. Shonda's perspective, is Adult in Training. So when she references her AITs, it doesn't matter if they go to GRPS or a neighboring school district, our students know what that means. So, Ms. Shonda, if you're here tonight, we just want to recognize you. I see you with everything. My colleagues see you with everything. Our board sees you with everything, and you deserve this recognition. You truly are a rock star, and thank you for all you do, Ms. Shonda. And I believe she's here with us this evening. Ms. Shonda, I see your name, but you're on mute unless, unless there's something wrong with my screen.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
You can. Thank you.
Alright. Oh, there you guys are. Well, thank you, Dr. Gorman and the Grand Rapids Board of Education for this recognition. It's very humble. It really is. And most, if you know me, I don't do it for the public recognition. I do it to support the AIT that you said unaccompanied care. Because it's, it's all about them. Just bless your house. Thank you so much for thinking of me, and I really appreciate this honor itself. I don't know what else to say because I don't like to say stuff.
Absolutely. Thank you for everything that you do for the district. I know whenever I walk into a game, I'm gonna hear you on the mic, hear you in the hallways, talking to the kids, knowing them by name. Whether they're in uniform or not, you remember them, and that means a lot to them. I know my daughter, the first time you saw us together, she was like, how do you know Ms. Shonda? She's like, I love Ms. Shonda. So that, that's really important to our kids, that when they're out in the world, they still see people from GRPS who know them and have a real relationship with them. So thank you for doing that work and being such a great ally for the district.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shonda.
Thank you.
Dr. Gorman, can I quickly, Ms. Shonda, in honor of you and all that you do, I'm gonna ask that you smile so I can take a wonderful selfie to post.
Oh, my goodness. Yes.
Congratulations.
She beat you to it. That was, that was your role.
Yeah, yeah. I definitely want to chime in real quick, if I may. There's not much more that can be said other than, you know, like, like Dr. Gorman said, she's definitely an ally, a friend, and generally a rock star in this community, literally. And there wasn't much, we couldn't put enough on paper to truly indicate the impact that this woman has had on hundreds, thousands, maybe, of, not just young people, but all of us. I mean, there's always good energy. There's always just a loving spirit, and it's always really wise words to offer too, though. And just really want the underscores already said, and, and say, hey, we, we talk about Ms. Shonda in our own house. You know Ms. Shonda? Yeah, 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 you know, yeah, for sure. And so, no, God bless you. Thank you for, for everything, really sincerely.
Thank you so much. That was very kind.
Okay, let's see. Alright, Dr. Gorman, I will let you keep.
Alright, I will keep at it, Ms. Grant. So I would like to acknowledge another staff member who has done phenomenal things for the Grand Rapids Public Schools. At this time, I would like to recognize the Michigan Association of School Personnel Administrators 2020 Human Resources Support Staff of the Year, Ms. Rosemary Salinas. And so, Rosemary works with our human resources department. She's worked very well with Sharon Pitts, Mickey Savage, and the whole team. So I'd like to read just a little bit about Rosemary really quickly. Good afternoon. I am pleased to announce that Rosemary Salinas was awarded the Michigan Association of School Personnel Administrators Outstanding Human Resources Support Staff Person of the Year. Rosemary serves in multiple roles in the human resources office. She is an executive assistant, office manager, scheduling extraordinaire, and office fitness master, among other things. She is responsible for teacher certification, employment, and verification, FOIAs, and supporting legal counsel, and the director of human resources. She is very innovative. To streamline her workload, as well as to assist in inefficiencies, or, I'm sorry, to assist in efficiencies across the district, she worked with the ID Department to create an online program for supervisors to request additional personnel and to create an online program to assist in paying staff for additional duties. These programs have helped the district replace, hire, and pay staff more efficiently. Rosemary never hesitates to assist anyone, no matter how heavy her own workload may be, and always looks for ways to improve the work we do. She uses informal leadership to get her work done, and she is widely respected throughout the organization. In addition to all of her duties at the office, she finalized her master's degree in human resources in 2019 and received her PHR certification from SHRM, so Professional Human Resources and Society of Human Resources Management. Please join me in congratulating Rosemary Salinas as this year's MASPA, outstanding HR Support Staff Person of the Year. And I believe Rosemary is here, and we would love for you to say a few words, Rosemary.
Hi. Can you all see me?
We can hear you.
Well, thank you so much. I am very grateful for this opportunity and then for the recognition. Thank you, Dr. Gorman, Ms. Grant, and the other board members. It is always my pleasure to serve the district and also the students. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rosemary. Thank you for your service.
Congratulations, Rosemary.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Ms. Grant, I believe I've finished with my celebrations. I believe you have the last one.
Alright. Okay, lastly, but definitely not least, we would love to recognize and appreciate our student representatives for the board for this school year, and I believe that we have them with us this evening.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine.
Believe they're both here, Ms. Grant.
Okay, alright, thank you. Pulling up my board docs piece. Alright, well, this evening, we as a board would just like to appreciate the time that you all spent with us as our student board representatives. We know that this year has been interesting on so many levels for you all. But first, let me introduce, we have Lamaria Benson from City High, and then we also have Zemarius Vell-Mincho from Innovation Central. So thank you very much for joining us. Dr. Gorman, I am not able to pull up the piece in board docs. Do you?
So we, we have two certificates of appreciation, and we also have some other gifts that we would like to give you this evening. Hopefully, we will see you in person sooner than later. I am, I'm sorry that this is all I have to show, and I have writing on one of these, but there are a couple of certificates which look much nicer than these in person that we'll be, we will be mailing to you, as well as a nice gift for all of your service. So thank you for supporting us, and thank you for giving us the student voice in both of your buildings. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. And if you all would like to share any words with us, please feel free.
Hi. I just, I just wanted to thank you guys for just giving me an opportunity to sit and get to know how the board meetings work. I definitely learned a lot during this whole process, and I'm kind of sad that everything was cut short, but I'm glad that I ended up the school year. And next up for me is college. Graduation is this Wednesday, and so I'm very excited to officially say that I graduated high school. And next up for me is just going to attend Western Michigan University. Go Broncos!
Go Broncos!
So I'm very excited about that, to be representing GRPS at Western. Thank you.
I want to say something too. I just wanted to thank all of you as well and our administrators for making this transition as smooth as possible. This wasn't expected. I'm sure that a lot of people weren't expecting this whole thing to happen, but I want to thank you for just keeping us in mind and making it as smooth as possible. I also like to thank the other staff and security guards and all those people that helped give out food and everything for the people that were in need. That was very helpful. I have fun this year with my voice, using my voice because I know that's my calling. And so this was very important. I learned a lot, and I'm very grateful to be a student rep. And so this was very important. I learned a lot, and I'm very grateful to be a student rep.
Thank you, ladies. We know that you both had such an extensive resume before you even came to join us at the board. You both have done amazing work throughout your time with GRPS, and we know that you will continue to do amazing things. Thank you. We are all so proud of you, and we look forward to hearing about what you do in the future. And I'm going to take some time to go one by one, and if you all would like to share some words, I know that they would appreciate it. Let's start with Ms. Lewis. That's who I see first.
No, I'm just so happy to have met you girls and to have worked with you. And I know that you're such excellent students, and we've had such wonderful conversations over the past, I don't know, six or eight months now. And congratulations on your graduation and good luck in college. And I think Lamaria has another year, doesn't she? She's a junior. So maybe we'll see you around then, at graduation next year, Lamaria. How about that?
Dr. Flores.
Well, likewise, congratulations for an excellent year of service, both to Lamaria and to Damaris. I'm certainly proud of you and the leadership that you're exhibiting and the future focus that you have on further education and contributing to our community. So it's been a pleasure meeting you, and I wish you all the most positive things in life that life has to bring to you. And don't forget to come back and help us, okay? We've got to educate the masters. Thank you.
Ms. Davis.
I just want to say congratulations to both of you on this year. And that's wonderful news that you're going to Western. Good luck with everything. I know you'll do wonderfully. And it's just been so nice to have some students at the board meetings so that we can hear the updates about what's going on in your buildings and just have your voice there. So thank you for being a part of our meetings this year, and have a good summer.
Mrs. Williams.
I'd like to say thank you, ladies, for your service. It has been a pleasure to get to know you a little bit. I'm excited about what your futures look like, and I would like to say, go Broncos to Damaris. I'll see you around.
Ms. Shaqy.
Well, don't tell the other board members, but the student reps are always some of my favorite colleagues on the board table. I'd love hearing your updates, and you bring us to life because it is you that we serve. So thank you for giving up your Monday evenings twice a month to sit with us and go through lots of votes and topics. I just really appreciate your service. And I just want to remind you that life and career paths is windy. And when you step out there and start on a path, do not be discouraged if that path takes a different way. It is who you are, and we see who you are that will get you where you need to be. So I sit here before you, a cosmetologist turned construction person turned school board member. So remember that it is you and your core and your intelligence and your drive that is going to get you where you need to go. Good luck.
Thank you, Dr. Baker.
Yeah. Really disappointing that we didn't get to spend more time together this year. Lamaria, I have to say that if you, if your experience was to help you to find your voice, then, you know, I think it's probably one of the most important things that you should learn from GRPS. I'm really happy that you've done this. And Damaris, you know, Western is okay. So it'll work. But anyway, I'll see you on Wednesday night at your graduation, and best of luck.
All right, Reverend Matias.
We are so grateful that your families loaned you to us for the last 12 or so years. What an honor to serve, you know, your families, but through you. I sincerely hope that you found some sense of personal power, what it means to sit at a seat where they make decisions, and that you take that into your experience going into college and then demanding service and demanding a voice. We sincerely hope that we've been able to encourage you throughout this year as we've talked, you know, personally, and I got a chance to go to Central and Lamaria to talk to you and your family. Just really hope that you know that we have your back as a district and that we want to continue to encourage you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Probably can't add much more. Definitely go Broncos. Ignore Dr. Baker. Broncos, the town's a great place to get an education, great college town. You'll enjoy yourself, and you'll also learn a lot. So definitely go Broncos, for sure. But yeah, definitely congratulate to both of you for just all the great support you provided us during this time. And guess the last piece, whatever influence you have, get people in your circle to make sure they vote this year, please. Just go ahead and put a save the date, whatever, just start getting some momentum going, and make sure you get your social circle to get out and represent themselves appropriately in the ballot box. I know you will. You're both responsible people. I'm just trying to nudge you more. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much, ladies. Dr. Gorman, do you have any last words?
Just continue to be rock stars. You were selected to be members of this board for a reason. There was a very thorough process that was used to decide who was going to represent the students of GRPS this year. And I think we did very well in selecting both of you. So great job. Big things to come for both of you in the future. And hopefully have a wonderful summer and a great next year.
I do have one question.
Yes.
Are we allowed to have our nameplates?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
I will get those to you. I will get those to you. I'll send them this week.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, ladies. Oh, well, actually, stay with us because next we do have reports from the student representatives. Do you all have reports for today?
We do not.
Okay, no worries if there aren't reports. Thank you very much, you ladies. Have a good evening.
You as well.
Take care.
Okay, so we are going to move to superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you. So for the superintendent's report this evening, I would just like to provide some school closing procedures and a couple of additional updates. So I was informed today by Chief of Staff Larry Johnson that we have now distributed 200,000 meals, 200,000 meals at our meal sites. We are going to continue providing meals until the end of June. And then, once we get to July, we will provide meals during our summer programming. So we will continue to feed our families and our students this summer. But 200,000 meals is quite an accomplishment. So a big shout out to our Chief of Staff, our Nutrition Services Team, all the security officers for pulling that off, and all the volunteers and essential workers. Of course, this is the last week of school. I can't believe it. We, on Wednesday, our students will be finished for the year. We are hopeful that they will enroll in some of our summer programming, our programs rather, that we have to offer. All of these programs, you can learn more about them at GRPS.org and just click on the Summer School tab. So students, please do that. As it relates to graduations, again, I just shared with, before the meeting with a couple of Board of Education members, that I had the opportunity to view the first virtual graduation with all of their remarks. And just a big shout out to all of the board members for helping, you know, pull off those ceremonies. We really appreciate your being there. We did the very best we could under some very challenging circumstances. So again, this is a placeholder. We are honoring our students right now with the hopes to honor them in a couple of months from now in person with all of their friends and family. So just a quick recap of the schedule. CA Frost and Innovation Central both graduate virtually on Wednesday. Of course, it's Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori. 5:30 CA Frost, 7 o'clock Innovation Central and Grand Rapids Montessori. Thursday at 5:30 is City, followed by Ottawa Hills at 7 o'clock. And then Friday, we have U-Prep at 5:30 and Union at 7 o'clock. These ceremonies will be on Channel 27, as well as the GRPS website, Facebook, YouTube, and the school's website. So please, please spend some time recognizing our students under these very challenging circumstances. Computer turn in lots of questions about computer turn in. We are allowing our families to hold on to those computers throughout the summer. So except, of course, the seniors. So we will be making arrangements to get the seniors' devices and also give seniors their diplomas. But we really wanted our students to hold on to their devices so they would have them for summer programming. So we will have instructions as we get to the end of summer as it relates to turning in those devices. But right now, we want our families to hold on to those devices, of course, with the exception of our seniors. Locker cleanouts, of course, is going to be next week on June 8, 9, 10, and 11. At GRPS.org, we have the schedules. We have the names that will be going at certain times. So please go to GRPS.org to find those dates, find those times. Summer school begins on June 22 and ends on July 23. Summer programming goes Monday through Thursday with no programming on Friday. I've been very fortunate enough to be a part of the Governor's and the State Superintendent's Return to School Work Group. We have had two meetings so far, and the first two meetings have really been about, you know, what, as a superintendent, are you most concerned about with opening schools in the fall? So we're engaging in lots of dialogue now. We will be submitting a plan late June to the governor, and then that will be unveiled, I'm assuming, early July for everyone to see as it relates to getting back to school. We were also part of a Kent Intermediate Superintendent's Association press conference this week. So I was very fortunate enough to represent to the Grand Rapids Public Schools with that press conference. And then lastly, I would just like to, I believe this is the last Board of Education meeting. I know there may be some other work groups and things of that nature, but I would like to just, of course, welcome Dr. Robie again to this work. She has been side by side with our cabinet every single day, learning as much as she possibly can about the school district, really guiding us in the right direction. I think we're going to have a tremendous transition, and we're fortunate enough to have a leader like Dr. Robie. So, Dr. Robie, if I haven't had a chance to say it publicly, welcome aboard. We're so happy you're on the team. And those are my end of the year updates. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have action items. First, we are going to start with the Grand Rapids Child Discovery Center Reauthorization resolution. I'd like to, actually, Dr. Gorman, is it Ms. Pitts who can give an overview of this?
Absolutely. So Ms. Pitts can give an overview of the two child discovery items that are on the agenda. So Ms. Pitts, could you please come forward?
Good evening, Dr. Gorman, President Grant, board members, Dr. Robie. Yes, so as you all may recall, the Child Discovery Center has a three-year charter with the board, and it will expire June 30. There's an extensive process that a charter has to go through to renew their charter. We look at their academic progress. We look at whether or not they set forth the objectives that they had established in their initial charter. They have to have their Art of Incorporation and a lot of other legal requirements. So, and the state has a checklist that we use to be able to evaluate the charter application. Matthew Bearsford and I, Matthew Bearsford from who's the executive director that is assigned to the Child Discovery Center, has evaluated the academic portions of the charter. Of course, I looked at the legal portions and made sure that they had everything that they needed to have that was required by law, and it does. So we are here tonight based on the superintendent's recommendation to ask the board to renew the charter. They have met, I believe, well, at least they've met the legal requirements, and I believe they have met the goals that they set forth in their charter. And you all have the charter. I believe you have the charter application. It's pretty extensive. So I don't know if there are any questions about that.
I don't have any. If there's no discussion, do I have a motion to approve the Grand Rapids Child Discovery Center Reauthorization resolution?
Motion to approve the reauthorization of Child Discovery Center?
Support.
I'm sorry, Ms. Lewis.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross? Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqy?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have the resolution to approve the Grand Rapids Child Discovery Center Board of Directors. Is there any discussion or questions around this resolution? All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the Board of Directors for Child Discovery?
Support.
Support.
Thank you.
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Shaqy?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution regarding the asbestos designated person immunity. Do we have any questions or discussion on this item?
Which one is this again? Asbestos, did you say?
A resolution regarding the asbestos designated person immunity.
So Ms. Grant, there was one before, which is the layoff resolution.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have that listed next.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Grant.
No, no, we're fine. If we would like to cover the layoff resolution first, we can. Is there any discussion for that item? All right, do I have a motion to approve the layoff resolution?
Motion. Motion to approve great layoff resolution? Or?
Reverend Matias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross? Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Shaqy?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. And President Grant?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, we have the Resolution Regarding the Asbestos Designated Person Immunity. Is there any discussion around this item? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion for approval.
Rebecca Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqie?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have the We Rise Together Resolution.
On this agenda, we have
I'm following the Board docs just because it keeps me.
I don't know. This is the one I ran off from Board docs, I thought.
Okay, but do you have the sheet for the We Rise Together vote?
I didn't get that today from Julie.
Okay.
Ms. Grant, may I share the, may I share the next three we have, just so we're on the same page? So the We Rise Together Resolution, the Our Communities Children Fiscal Year 2021 Budget, and then the Purchasing Agenda. Those are the three final items.
Yes, do you have those items, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, I do, just in a different order, so that's fine. I'll figure it out. It's okay.
Okay, my apologies. Okay, so next, we have the We Rise Together Resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the We Rise Together Resolution?
Court.
Rebecca Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqie?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores? Dr. Flores? Dr. Flores?
Yes.
You were hiding from me. And President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have Our Communities Children's Fiscal Year 2021 Budget. If there is no discussion or question, do I have a motion to approve this item?
So moved.
Have support?
Support.
Rebecca Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqie?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes, and President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And then the last item we have, the last action item we have for this evening is the Purchasing Agenda. Is there any discussion there?
We have one question. I was just looking at the Republic contract, and I see there's some increase from year to year, and I assume that's relatively standard. But the increase from the second to third year seemed to be a bit large, and I just want to, if anyone is available, to help me understand a little bit on that. If not, I can take a response later.
I don't know if Mr. Ober. No problem, Mr. Ross. We'll bring in Larry O'Burst at this. Ms. Grant, may I bring in Larry O'Burst at this? That a little bit? Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't do the math on it. It just looked like a larger jump than the normal, and maybe in the back of my mind, with no Mr. Clown parents around, and maybe thought maybe Newby was getting hustled on behalf of us. I don't know. But it just caught my eye, really. Just caught my ass off. And it seemed like it wasn't aligned with the other increase. And I guess my concern was, in the fourth year, are we gonna see another increase? And is this exponential increase that's baked in every year? And to some extent, I do understand that, but that seemed to be a big, a big jump for that type of baking in, I guess.
Good evening, President Grant, members of the Board, Dr. Gorman and Dr. Roby. Yes, the waste contract, actually, we just completed bidding out those services. Republic had been the provider of those services for a number of years. We bid it out. Got a couple of responsibility for Republic and the city of Grand Rapids. And Republic provided the best overall service. So it's a three-year contract, Dr. Ross. Those built the total fees under that scenario, three-year scenario.
So this is a, will this be? Was Republic our provider before?
They are. They are, yeah. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, that will begin, will begin July 1st.
Okay.
And so, Mr. Ober, what, what you're saying is that when the bidding was put out, they still outbid the other providers?
Republic?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yep. You look, again, and look at the overall survey. They were, they were the low bidder. The two proposals were received. And they also, because they have been with the district for a number of years, they had all the containers put in place. Now, obviously, with the uncertainty of what fall is going to look like, Republic, as well as Grand Rapids, we have the ability, much like we do, much like we've been doing the last, really, 12 weeks, where we have not been in session, but yet we've had some schools that have had their waste containers filled up. We have on-demand. We just, once it fills up, we call them if we're not in school on a regular basis. The District Republic obviously gives us a credit for the long breaks we have, the winter break, spring break, and as I just mentioned, during the summertime, they're on an ask-call basis, needed, as-called-needed basis. All the recycling will be taken to the Kent County Recycling Center.
Oh, yeah, so Mr. Ober, I guess the reason this got my attention is, I don't know, I didn't do the math, but it looks like maybe 15%, maybe not that much, 10% increase from the second to the third year. And I guess that was the particular thing, because with that being the ending price for the third year, and how these things typically go, Frank, I guess, is that sort of a setup to have a higher starting price for the next negotiation? And, you know, so, yeah, but, but nonetheless, that's probably maybe a little too nuanced for me not giving any heads up about it.
Okay, do we have any other questions for Mr. Ober's? All right, thank you very much.
Yes.
If there are no further questions, do I have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
I'll move.
Support, Court.
Rebecca Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqie?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis, yes. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
Support.
Rebecca Mathias?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shaqie?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Lewis, yes. President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next, we have discussion items. Now I'm trying to make sure that I have the same agenda that you guys have. Next, we have discussion items. And so there is an item for Board Budget Meetings. And we do know that this month, we will need to meet a little bit more than we have been so that we will have an opportunity to review the proposed budget. What the administration is suggesting is that on June 15, they provide us an overview of the proposed budget as we normally do at a work session, but that we would meet on June 15 for that. And then that on June 29, the final budget would be submitted for approval. Is there any objection to that or any discussion?
Are we talking at normal time, 6:30, or?
Yes, I think that we can discuss that. If we wanted to move it, I'm looking to Dr. Gorman, but if we wanted to do work session time, is there a preference for your team?
No, whatever you agree to, Ms. Grant, we will accommodate.
The overview can tend to be a little in-depth, which is needed. So if you would like to meet at a work session time for the overview, I would, I would propose that. So on the 15th at 4:30?
Yep, another problem.
And then if you would like to have the actual budget approval at 6:30 on the 29th, that may work. That will be a quicker meeting. Okay.
And we will assume virtual for both of those. Virtual meetings.
I'm, I'm going to look back to Dr. Gorman. I'm not sure where the law has us on that.
Yep, so what we'll, what we'll do right now is, what we'll do right now is we'll plan on virtual right now. And if something changes, we will absolutely work with Ms. Grant to see if maybe we can do something in person. But as of right now, as of today, pre-executive orders, we were planning on doing things virtually. But we can absolutely make those adjustments if we are able to. So we will let you know as soon as possible, Ms. Grant and Dr. Baker.
It is not up to me at all, but if I have anything to say about it, I hope that we can be virtual.
She's got that hotline to the Governor.
You want it virtual, Christian?
Yes, I want us all alive and well and healthy.
Oh, well. I'd like to be all well and healthy at Franklin Campus. Well, this is too complicated for me, so I want to go back to the doing things.
I think we all know that my best friend is a hand sanitizer and that.
Right, I forgot. I forgot. I'm sorry, Christian.
So.
We'll do this forever now.
I have just a thought to, in terms of, I think that budgeting for next year is going to be an incredibly challenging job for the people behind the Excel spreadsheets. But I think that we're going to need our community to understand where we're at and how to proceed and understand challenges that we have. And so I know that our work sessions and budget votes tend to not be very well attended, but it'd be nice to have some sort of a communication out there to encourage the public to listen in and be our partners in understanding how to proceed and how to, you know, how to get them to help us advocate.
Absolutely. I think that's a wonderful idea. All right, so we will make sure that, I mean, of course, it's always posted, but that we share with others and invite them to join. Okay, so we do have one more discussion item for this evening. And there's not anything wrong with my agenda, Dr. Gorman, but this is potentially your last meeting with us. And we wanted to take some time to just really let you know how much we appreciate you. We appreciate your service. We appreciate how you are willing to sacrifice so much for our students in our district. And nothing has proven that more than this year. You have been with the district for quite a while, and you have served in many roles. But this year, you have really laid it all on the line for, for our students. And we want to let you know as a board, how much, and as a district, how very much we appreciate you. And we will find time to celebrate you in person. But we also wanted to take this moment to let you know that. So I am asking Mr. Hemhold to join me. We do have a resolution for you.
All right, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
We can hear you. Good. All right, President Grant, members of the Board, Dr. Gorman and Dr. Roby, it's my honor to, to read this resolution. Grand Rapids Public Schools Resolution for Dr. Ronald Gorman. Whereas Dr. Ron Gorman was unanimously appointed to serve as the interim superintendent for the Grand Rapids Public Schools effective July 1, 2019, by the Grand Rapids Board of Education of a special board meeting work session held on May 13, 2019. And whereas Dr. Gorman accepted the appointment to serve as the interim superintendent for one year, he set forth to lead and stabilize the district during the transition. As the Board conducted a search for a permanent superintendent, Dr. Gorman continued to expand upon making academic gains for all students, ensure staff morale and culture remain positive, and honor traditions and programs students and staff had come to rely on as part of the fabric of the district. And whereas Dr. Gorman's leadership has been an asset during an unprecedented time in our nation's history with the COVID-19 pandemic, he made tough decisions that would affect the Grand Rapids Public Schools community and executed those efforts with fidelity through communication and transparency. His leadership guided the district's distance learning plan. And whereas the Board of Education wishes to thank Dr. Ron Gorman for his leadership and integrity, Dr. Gorman has been accommodating and professional during his time of transition and has risen above and beyond what was expected of him. He will graciously return to his previous role as the Assistant Superintendent of Pre-K-12 Leadership to focus on academics for the district. And whereas Dr. Ronald Gorman has been an exemplary leader who gave his full commitment to the superintendent role. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the members of the Grand Rapids Board of Education do hereby congratulate and commend Dr. Ron Gorman for a job well done. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ron Gorman and a copy be placed and filed with the Board Secretary.
Thank you. We will have a copy of this framed and given to you. We also look forward to placing your photo on the wall in the auditorium. And, you know, we can't say it enough, how much we appreciate you. You have just had so much integrity and so much commitment during this time. You've been on the front lines. You have never shied away from doing the work, but you have also never asked for any of the praise or the applause. So we want to make sure that we take some time and make you feel a little uncomfortable and give that to you. So now we are, I'm going to invite my colleagues to, to join me and just really take some time to celebrate you. Let's start with Ms. Lewis.
Well, Dr. Gorman, I am so proud of you and all the work that you've done. And I will be reporting to your fourth-grade teacher right after this meeting and tell her that you've been a great superintendent, and we're also proud of you and grateful and grateful. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Davis?
Dr. Gorman, thank you so much for just really stepping in. You've always been an asset to the district, but I think because of that, we were just really able to put our trust in you and as well as all of the employees and families in our district. I think you've just always been somebody that's easy to talk to, and you know what you're doing. And we just, you know, applaud you for all of your work, especially during such a change that we had starting in March. So you've done a wonderful job. Congratulations. So you've done a wonderful job, congratulations, and I'm glad we get to work with you moving forward as well. And I also just want you, or I'll thank your family, so thank you to your family for lending you even more this past year.
Yes, Mrs. Shaki?
I remember the day that I was driving and thought, huh, no snow days, this has been a good year for Dr. Gorman, and then, we all know what happens. But seriously, Dr. Gorman, I am better because I have worked alongside you, and I know you to be one of the most authentic leaders I've ever met, truly. When I have had the chance to walk the halls of a school with you, or attend an event, everybody knows you, you know, and you know them, you know them by name, you know our people, and there's nothing more authentic than that about a leader, and I just know how much. You are loved in this district, you are relentlessly positive, and you are so responsive, and I know that that was one of your goals, and I saw it, we saw this district benefited from you because you set that goal and you achieved it, so thank you, thank you from me personally, thank you from Grand Rapids Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Baker.
Ron, I got you a cake and some flowers, but the mayor says I can't leave the house, so. I, you know, I think that anybody that watches you even for a moment knows how much you care about Grand Rapids Public Schools, and the students, the staff, and everybody. I think that, just to this meeting, your response to Lamaria's question about getting the nameplates, and you immediately said, "I'll get that to you this week," and, you know, that's been your experience with me, my observations of you for, you know, over 10 years, is that you always are there to take care of the students, and give people what they need, and, you know, just tremendous care for the district, and I can't imagine anyone that loves Grand Rapids Public Schools more than you, and it's been a real honor to work with you all this year, so thanks for your work.
Mr. Ross?
Wow, I don't know, I'll probably keep it short, though, I think, Tony, you may have just had a great segue statement, I don't think anyone loves Grand Rapids Public Schools more than Dr. Ron Gorman. I mean, you really, literally ride it out for this district, and, you know, in a variety of roles over the years, and it's really been exciting to see your name associated with being a superintendent of this district. So thank you very much for your service, not just in this role, but literally in everything that you have done over the decades, while you bleed any great colors of Grand Rapids Public Schools, really, thank you. Not bad for, was it God, would you go, Lee, one of those, not bad for a guy from someplace else.
Thank you, Reverend Mathias?
Wow, Dr. Gorman, not only has it been a pleasure to work alongside of you, and certainly, your wife too, has been a part of this district, and loving on our kids, but you're one of the few, if I may say so, you're one of the few white guys who has been a reconciler, you have, you have served, not just in terms of the profession that you love, but you have actually been an example to people of how to raise people of color, and I so, so appreciate that in you. You have been an example to our kids and our teachers of what it means to see a person who is able to reconcile from where they've come from, but also then raise them up, and so I appreciate your leadership, your candor, and your service, thank you.
Dr. Flores?
Geez, so much has been said, it's really difficult to follow it, but I'll certainly say ibid, you know, definitely repeat the same thing that has been said, or many of the things that have been said about you, Dr. Gorman. You know, I remember many conversations we had when I went back to teaching, and had to come back and eat humble pie here as a teacher, having been an administrator, and the reflections that you gave me when I was teaching were, are still embedded in my mind. It's unfortunate you and I haven't had much conversation since then, but those conversations that we've had have been 100, and I appreciate the cross-cultural element that you bring to the district, your perspective on the community, the fact that you're out there, you know, actually face-to-face with community, seeing you at my store, appreciate that, conversations with you have always been good, respect is there. I wish you longevity with the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and I think we're all the better for your service, and I'm sure we'll have an opportunity to talk more.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
Well, Dr. Gorman, I'd like to say thank you, thank you for your kindness, thank you for friendship, thank you for mentorship, and thank you for your heart and your passion. It was clear to me from my first meeting with you that you were so genuine, and which allowed me to trust you instantly, and that's not something that I do very easily. And so, I want to thank you for the way you have helped our students, loved on our students, encouraged our students, and helped show them their greatness. That is just second to none, I told you when I met you, I thought you were a rock star, so sir, I'll say to you, rock out.
Thank you very much, Dr. Roby, Dr. Roby has some words as well.
So, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to just share a few words. Obviously, I have known Dr. Gorman, I'm the newest to learn of Dr. Gorman, but in the short time that he and I have gotten opportunities to know one another, I have found him to be all the things that many of you have already stated. The genuineness, his love for people is evident in the work that he does, his actions and words are aligned, and so, Ron, as a colleague, as a newcomer to the community, I have to say thank you, I appreciate just how you have reached out to me, and have made sure that I have had a connection to not only the Board, but the Cabinet and other folks within the Grand Rapids community. Everybody would not necessarily do that, and I appreciate the work that you've done to ensure that there is a smooth transition, and that speaks to who you are as a person, who you are as a professional, and who you are as just a gentleman. So thank you, I look forward to getting to know you better. You still are going to buy me breakfast, as you promised, once I get there, so I'm looking forward to that, and again, kudos to you, and thank you.
And I just want to end by saying, I think I've told this story a few times, but I don't know if Dr. Gorman has ever heard me say it, the first time I came back to GRPS after graduation was fresh out of college as what they called a yellow shirt, so someone who tagged around with security at the end of the school year to help close out the school year, and I started at Creston, and Dr. Gorman was the principal there, and we didn't work together that much, but I just remember his interaction with the kids. And from that moment, I've never had to question how much you loved those kids, because I remember you walking through the hallways and knowing every student's name, and there were a lot of kids to know, and you knew them, and they knew you, and even when you corrected those students, you had so much love, and so, thank you, thank you for still having that love for those kids, I didn't mean to get choked up, but it's so evident how much you love our kids, and times like now, we need that, so thank you. All right, well, with that, we've all provided our comments, I don't know if anyone has additional comments for the evening. If not, I will say, meeting is adjourned.